...in the Chamber of Commerce here in town. And we are glad to have you here. I had no idea what to anticipate, knowing that the Seahawks are playing. But they are upstairs. We only think about 27 people upstairs watching the game. And Dustin gave me permission to interrupt the night to keep your prize score. So anyway, anyway, we're glad to have you here. I do want you to give a round of applause to Stuart. He's put a lot of work into getting ready for this event, so please make sure you thank him. And we're glad you're here, and here's Mr. Stuart.
Thanks, Megan. Okay, welcome, everyone. Glad to be, I'm glad you're all here. I just want to go through some of the ground rules for tonight and how the process will work. I just, Jeremy, do you have a good sound check back there? Is everything okay?
Yep.
All right, so again, I want to welcome everyone. This is a pretty unique year for us in regards to our elections. This is the first time in an extremely long time that the city of Carnation actually has people to choose from, at every position, which is a wonderful thing. I mean, regardless of who you vote for, the fact that you get a choice, you actually get to choose a direction in terms of where you want Carnation to go based on people's thoughts and opinions. So that is great. And these positions themselves, in this year, it's positions one, three, and five. And then two years from now, it'll be positions two and four. But one, three, and five are four-year terms, and they go from January 1st is when they take office of 2016, and it ends on December 31st, 2019. And as mentioned, I'm Stuart List. I'm going to be your moderator this evening. And frankly, I look at it as my job is frankly to encourage a discussion and to keep things flowing as fluent and as efficiently as possible. The expectations of the candidates, though, are, and that I admit to them, that I committed to them, is that I'm going to do my very best to ensure that the candidates actually answer the question. So instead of just having a broad answer, if I'm really answering the question, my job is to help hold them to that question and get an answer for you. So let me explain how it works tonight. Each candidate, each candidate actually has received, has agreed to all the ground rules that I'm about to mention. Also, they have received a list of questions in advance to prepare for, without knowing, frankly, how many questions we would get from the audience, to keep things flowing. And so everything related tonight has been forthright very much, in terms of very visible to what we'll be doing, and there'll be no surprises. Each of you tonight should have received, or at least on the chair, should have received one of these little pieces of paper. Many of you have submitted questions, but it gives you an opportunity. You put your name on it. If you have a question, and there's a subject matter for the questions, such as, you know, streets as an example, street maintenance, you can say that as a subject matter. Circle the person that you want to direct that question to. And it can also be a question that's being asked for the whole panel. And then go ahead and raise your hand. Peggy's going to come around and collect them. And then we'll go ahead and ask the candidate that question as we get to it. Keep in mind that, really, I will tell you, my objective is to be in a position for you to get the information you're looking for to make an intelligent decision on election, or in this case, to submit to mailing your ballot by election night. So if you think of a question during the forum, like I said, please feel free to raise your hand, and Peggy will come by, grab that question, she'll do the pre-screening, and then hand it over. This will help keep every, yes, ma'am?
Oh, she has a first-class.
Yeah, great. Okay, so that's great. Oh, I meant the left hand, no. Also be aware that tonight's forum is actually going to be recorded by Jeremy Patsy. He's a senior at Cedar Crest High School, and he's part of the Technical Student Association. And the recording will be available on the Chamber site, and also available for purchase for a fee that would be donated to the organization. Our timer this evening is Michael Ward. Thank you. Being Michael Ward, and he'll be giving out the 30-second notice to the candidates that they'll be able to see. Then there'll be a 10-second reminder that they'll be able to see. And then, of course, when the time's up...
Oh, wait, we didn't rehearse this. Wait, why didn't it work?
So when the time's up, there'll be a buzzer. Yes, so there will be a buzzer. I will tell you, as the, as all of these candidates, the panel is well aware, they will be cut off. They've been encouraged to be as concise as they can in the answers that they provide. At the time of the buzzer, in mid-sentence, I'll be saying, "Thank you very much," and we'll move on. The idea behind it, they have two minutes to answer all the general questions that we have. They'll have, I'm sorry, they'll have 90 seconds to answer those general questions. They'll have two minutes to answer any questions from the audience. And the difference is because they've got the general questions from me in advance, so they'll, you know, they should be well-prepared for those. And then the, if it is a question that is addressed to a particular candidate, their opponent, that person will have two minutes to answer, and then the opponent will have one minute to respond. Okay? And again, same time it will occur. The idea behind it, as I've already mentioned, is to keep the flow going, and so that there'll be no, no questions. All right, so now let me explain ground rules for that were agreed upon by each candidate. Each candidate, as you can tell, is sitting by position. This is important, because Fred is not running against Dustin. Fred is running against Steve. So that's why they're sitting by positions. That's why if a question's asked, every person, only that opponent will get to answer that question. It makes sense, I hope, to you, because that's who you're going to be voting, I mean, that's how you're making your decision. All general questions, however, whether it's from the audience or ones that have been pre-prepared in advance, will be asked of a whole panel, and each one will get the opportunity to ask, answer that particular question. After, I'm going to be doing an introduction of each of the candidates to help save time, and then we're going to go back, and they will talk about why they feel they're the best candidate and what their priorities are. Their questions asked of each candidate is either from my list or from yours, and the candidates have been asked specifically to be concise as they possibly can. Two minutes, I've already gone through that. And finally, each candidate will provide an opening statement, as well as a closing statement at the end. So unless there are any further questions, let's get started. All right, so first up, we're going to introduce, and I can introduce Fred Bear as well. He's been married to, Fred, wave if you can. Wave, let everybody know who you are. He's been married to Lois for 64 years. He's a Carnation resident since July 1998. For those of you that want to do the quick math, that's about 17 years. Retired Boeing air safety investigator and Navy commander. He's volunteered at the Carnation Elementary School for the past 16 years, helping in math. So if anybody here needs help with math, that's man. And this will be year 17, and he's actually helping at the elementary school. Served on Carnation Planning Board for over seven years, and now he's been on the City Council as he's an incumbent running. He's been on the City Council for the past eight years. He's still active after 44 years in the U.S. Coast Guard Exeterian by teaching boating safety classes and by conducting boating safety checks. He's a past Commodore of Queen City Yacht Club, and currently a member of his church's Finance Council, former chief systems engineer at Northwest Airlines, and at the same time was co-owner of a 24-lane boating establishment. All right, I also, I want to encourage you that if there's, feel free, you guys can not, you can applaud if someone gives an answer, you like the answer, go ahead and applaud. We're just wanting to try to keep that to a minimum. So position one, also running for position one is Steve McCall. Steve and his family have lived in Carnation for the past 20 years, 28 years, which he has witnessed a lot of changes. He's committed to the community of Carnation future. He's served two consecutive terms on the City, on the City of Carnation Planning Board, and he's, he's an active member, the Living Word Community Church in town, and also serves his community by donating time to Hope Link and other community events. Position three, we'll start with Jim, Jim Rabel. My, I'm going to read as he has it here. His family has moved to Carnation eight years ago. They chose Carnation because it has a small-town feel and a sense of community similar to where both he and his wife grew up. He has helped coach two of their kids in both the Snow Valley Baseball Association, as well as the soccer programs here in the valley. He has attended many City Council meetings, as often as he possibly can, and he's always reading the meeting minutes and studying the city budget to be able to determine what's the best way that the money can be used. He was asked by council and the former city manager to be on a committee to help create a budgeting process, and that committee came up with a guideline for the City Council to use for budgeting and spending money. Now, there's one person that's not here tonight, unfortunately. She just let me know late last night, I talked with her today. Jim is running against Lee Grumman. Lee is the incumbent opposition. Lee unfortunately is pretty sick. She wasn't even at the council meeting last night. So the reason why he's in the empty chair, it's not that she blows off, she really is sick and can't make it. But she did provide me a number of material that I said I would read for her, so her bio is, "She joined the City Council in 2008, was mayor from 2010 through 2012. Before joining the council, Lee served on the planning board for seven years. She grew up outside Boston and studied international nations at Tops University, and she moved to Seattle in 1991, and was the head roller of the Herb Bar in Fall City, and then moved to Carnation in 1995. In 2004, she opened up the Art Center at the former Miller's Dry Goods Building and launched a successful retail store there, starting in 2007." All right, position five, Dustin Green. Dustin grew up in his mother's hometown of Bothell, Washington, the grand city of Bothell, earning a mechanical engineering degree from the UW. That's okay, you still have a chance. Dustin started his career in the medical device industry and set up his family and his mother-in-law's hometown of the grand city of Carnation. Dustin has volunteered continuously over the last 19 years for local organizations such as the Eastman Rush Foundation, Carnation Matters, Carnation Elementary, the Sustainable Carnation Committee, and the River View Education Foundation. Although jobs and commutes have changed, Carnation has remained constant. Ernest Fix, also in position five. Ernest is running for council, position five. He was born and raised in Snoqualmie, and got wise and decided to move to Carnation. He bought his first home here in 2013. He has a bachelor's degree in political science at Washington State University, go boot, and has worked for the city of, my kids, and has worked for the City of Renovate's Public Works Department for the past 10 years. He has a background in public policy creation, municipal budgeting, infrastructure maintenance, and preservation. Shortly after moving to Carnation, Ernest was confirmed by the council as a member of the planning board. And since 2014, he's also served as the vice-chair of the planning board, and after being nominated and confirmed by those, by his fellow board members. One of the things that drew Ernest to Carnation was his love for the outdoors. He enjoys spending time with his two dogs at the Dog Park in Rivers. He's an avid mountain biker, frequently taking advantage of the trails at the Battle Park and the Snoqualmie Valley Trail. I think you would all agree, we have great quality candidates here, running here for the City Council positions. Okay, now, this is the point in the agenda where we're going to start with Fred, and they're going to go and talk about why they feel they're the best candidate, they give their opening statement. Fred?
Okay, they asked me why, they asked me, "Why are you running?" I think citizens should give back to community for all they receive from those who have preceded them. Our city has progressed to where it is today because of the efforts of previously elected and appointed people to various positions in Carnation. I personally want to give back to my community and work to ensure our citizens' expectations for the city are met, including our senior citizens and our youth. I can provide the city of Carnation with the best expertise in order to make it the best city it becomes. I have two top priorities for me at this particular time. One is to prudently manage the city's one-time, that is, the building boom, resources, maintain a balanced budget, and provide for the needs of our citizens, which include public safety. Secondly, follow through with the current planning for improving streets and other city infrastructure, and looking for sources of grant money to implement that plan.
I decided to run because I'd sat back and I'd done the planning board, made comments on the planning board, planning board make recommendations to the council, and it, nine times out, it can get shot down. So after watching this town go through the different changes that it's gone through over the last 28 years, it's time to get involved again. And this was my choice, to get involved. And my things that I would look at are a lot of the same as Fred's. The children, or the young produce of the community, the senior citizens, infrastructure, and roads. Those are the things that need to happen. Police is, police and fire are two of the things that I think we have to keep in the
I'm basically running for a couple of key reasons. But I'm heavily involved in City Council meetings. Even though I'm on the road, I actually listen to audio recordings afterwards to see what's happened in the city. I think that we need to prioritize life safety and infrastructure in the city, and I don't see that happening right now. I also want our City Council to make decisions based on master plan that we have, and not be a future tax burden for people. When you decide to put a structure in, what's going to happen with that ongoing infirmity? Our city is already taxed with magnates issues. We can't even keep up with some of the moaning bees to be done. So long-term planning with city budgeting issues, I think, is key. I have 15 years of owning my small business, putting plans together, negotiating contracts over multiple states for my dealers, my manufacturers, and make that a mutual win benefit for both the manufacturers and dealers. And I think that's a skill set that'll help bring to council. So either if you're a citizen of Carnation or a business owner, that you get a fair shake at the City Council when you come up with something, and actually have a long-term plan going forward. And that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I'm going to go ahead and read these. So Lee Grumman did provide an opening statement and answers to some of those advanced questions. It's been agreed upon that I'll, I'm going to read Lee's content as if she was here. So of course, I'm using the word "I," and "I" doesn't mean "Stuart," it means "Lee." Okay, here's what she says. "I moved to Carnation because of the small-town lifestyle and natural beauty of the area. I've served the Carnation community for 15 years because, like so many of you, I want our town to continue to be a safe, vibrant, close-knit community. As the population grows and the region develops, our town will continue to change. I work to balance our small-town character while we welcome new residents, build new houses, and support new businesses. The challenge is to understand this change, to be proactive on behalf of the things we want to maintain and innovate about things we want to improve. Through experience, I've learned a lot about this challenge and the resources at our disposal. I will continue this work if I am allowed." Dustin?
Hi, Dustin Green, position five. I'm just here tonight, so don't get fined. Actually, I really appreciate everyone being here tonight. The turnout really shows a lot of care for the town of Carnation. That's why I'm running. I care about Carnation. I want to be of service to my community. I think I'm an excellent candidate for the council based on my professional experience. I design medical devices by day, and to be successful, you have to work with diverse teams of people under schedule and budget constraints. And I would bring those skills to the council, along with a positive attitude. Two of my top priorities are public safety and also infrastructure. I think we'll get into more details as the night progresses. Thanks again for being here.
All right, I'm Remus Books. First, I'd like to thank Stuart and the Chamber and the Senior Center for Our Students and all of you for being here. It's nice to see how much interest we have in this election. I'm running for council because I'm going to continue to serve my community. I think we're in the midst of a period of change, and I think I have something to offer to make sure that change happens in the right direction. I think I'm going to be a unique candidate. I have a combination of education, I have a degree in political science, and, you know, professional experience working for a city. As far as my top two priorities, that was difficult to narrow down to just two. The ones I chose to focus on are responsible funding for public safety, and making sure that the budget process is transparent and aligns with the top priorities of citizens.
Great. Great, thank you all. All right, first question here. In your introduction, you mentioned your top priorities as a councilman. Why did you select those issues as your top concerns? Fred?
The revenue...
Here's your microphone. Better use this, of course. And this is a general question, so just go right down the panel.
For revenue, the city, at least for the last eight years, we've had a very difficult time with the revenue. And right now, we're seeing a building boom, which we're getting essentially, which are one-time monies, which we'll see at once for sales tax, and this in the future, probably the next four years, will disappear. So I have to be careful on how we, how we take this money, where we put it, and how we spend it. So to us and the council, we have to be very, very careful. We can't spend one-time money for something that we need to pay for years and years thereafter, and just won't be able to do it. For infrastructure, our streets in the old town particularly need it. We do have a plan in progress to develop a street priority and to redo these streets, basing our priorities what needs first and what comes second, and so forth. And we do have a plan, and we're, some of it, we're going to use some of this long-time money, which will be a one-time thing to do, and I think those are the things we need. The other things are going very well right now in the city, as per planning.
I chose the infrastructure and the roads of Carnation is the, the utilities in this city are lacking at best. And in my line of work, I'm a developer or contractor, and you, you can't wait till the very end. You've got to pre-plan it, you've got to move forward with it. And I don't see that happening with the current council, and that's the main reason that I'm using that one. Public safety is for the safety of all of us. I mean, it's just, we need to do it. It's expensive, it's hard to do, and we've got to get it done. But, you know, we just got to, we got to listen to the public and do what, what they're asking us to do. And the council has done a good job for what they've done with the funds they've had.
So the two basic things that I came up with was life safety and infrastructure. Life safety is key, because when you want a policeman there, or you want a firefighter there, you want to fund that first as a city. Also, infrastructure, I think every city needs to focus on those two things first, and everything else needs to come second. I've heard council members say, you know, "We spend over 50% of our budget in the general fund," so of course it's a priority. It doesn't make it a priority. What it makes it is just a line item in a budget. If it's a priority, you try to find, find out ways to make it work better with the money that you have and going forward. We'll probably get into this more as we go through, but I don't see police services and infrastructure to be really being a focus of City Council up to this point.
In this case, Lee had said, "Because they're the guide of all her decisions, they represent the long-term vision and values of this town. Everything else, police, roads, sidewalks, signage, economic development, are guided by this vision, which is the basis for her decisions. Without a goal, the decisions that must be made on one's way to the goal may be haphazard and ill-conceived. I'm clear about where we are going. I understand the vision and the design details that make up that vision." Dustin, I want to just encourage a candidate to please put the mic a little bit closer to your mouth, so that the audience can hear you. Dustin?
Okay. So public safety, everyone's mentioning it. Obviously, police, that's, there we go. Police is important. And it's looking like the 2016 budget is going to allow us to increase our police coverage. I would also take kind of a broader view of public safety and include disaster preparedness. I'd like to see the city focus more on that. I was actually kind of shocked this summer to find out that we have neighbors that really don't understand the toll, damn alarm, you know, what it's for, why it's important. And I'd like to see the city do a better job of educating not only people who live here, but of course, we're going to have a lot of the new neighbors that are going to need to know what to do. In terms of infrastructure, again, hot topic, the roads in town are pretty bad, but there's a good plan, I think, to prioritize and really repair what's there. But we need to really maintain what we have as well. So that's kind of like if you buy a car and never change the oil, it'll last so many miles, but if you change the oil, it'll last longer. So I really need to take that approach to all the city's assets.
All right, I'm going to keep the trend going, talking about public safety here. I think public safety should be the top priority of any city. That's why I chose it as one of my two points to emphasize here. I specifically think we need to identify a kind of renewable and reliable funding for police services. I agree with Dustin that the budget looks, you know, it shows a lot of promise, both the crime trends and the increased revenues in the general fund this year. I think certainly can thank the Sheriff's Department for a lot of that. That being said, I think it'd be unwise to consider it any less of a priority right now. I think we can't rely on having a surplus every year. I don't think that a dip in the, in the economy should result in a compromise in public safety. The other, other point I emphasized was kind of more general dealing with the budget. I think it should be a transparent process that deals with the priorities of the people. You know, that sounds like a, like a kind of basic idea, and it really is. But, you know, I've worked on municipal budgets before, and I realize it can be easy to just want to roll everything over without considering maybe the needs of the community have, have changed over time. So I think there's an opportunity to get the public more involved in the process and make sure that their voice is heard and they're happy with the services they get.
Thank you all. Okay, I'm going to take the, a question from the audience. This one's from Tim Brand. This one is addressed specifically to you, Jim. "You were active on the NO Committee for the Police Levy. How do we fund police services you say we need?"
That's a really good question. I was active on that committee. And I actually went to the King County Sheriff and asked him what we could do, and I asked him what they needed from the city of Carnation to actually do this. And by no means was it $80,000 that they needed to do this. I said, "Can we put a separate fund in, and if we got an extra $1,000, an extra $2,000, can we put that fund in place?" So as that built up over time, you could use that for targeted police services like you're talking about. He said, "That actually, actually makes a lot of sense." Also, the City Council didn't require any oversight on that $80,000. They just wanted the current city manager and the current police officer to have oversight on that. So it doesn't make sense to go and ask people for $80,000 and not have any oversight to come that long. I think there should be oversight on that fund, and it does need to know day-to-day activity of what we're doing, but every month or every quarter, it should be reporting back to the Safety Committee on Council to make sure those funds are spent properly going forward. Now, the city is debating a $50,000 police services fund. I don't know if that needs to be aligned on on the budget, or if it needs to be, have the separate fund that we can fund, because we do have a lot of one-time money coming into town in the next two to three years. So why don't we take that and budget it wisely and have oversight on those funds? City councils are really brash when they come and ask for money, but when they're budgeting out of the general fund, they seem to be a little bit hesitant in it. So that's my opinion on it, and actually going out and doing the research behind it, what's the, but King County Sheriff wanted. So thank you for the question.
Yeah, the only thing I'd ask you to clarify, if you could, is how you see the city being able to fund, I'm going to read this back up, the fund of police services?
I think I addressed that with having a separate fund set aside in the general fund, that as we have overflows in the city budget, that we can put those in there. And we need to take really the budget on, 30 seconds, on the baseline budget of what it looks like if 80% of these houses get filled, what's our incoming revenue? And then we can rest, needs to go into revenue stabilization, general fund. But I think we can do that.
Okay. I've got a question later on for the whole council related to police services and public safety, that talks about coverage and funding it in the long term. So we're going to get to that follow-up later. But I would like to take another question from the audience, because it's on the, on the related topic. This one is from David Rush, and it's for position, both candidates have position number five. We're going to start with Ernest, and then we'll give Dustin the opportunity. The question is, it has to do with the police force. Will you support police services and finance it, and why?
I'll absolutely support police services. And, you know, financing police services, one of the main things I emphasized, you know, and what I'd like to emphasize as a council member, certainly. You know, one thing that I've heard is needed, and I think we've kind of noticed is needed, is funding for evening and weekend patrols, prolonged investigations to deal with some of the chronic issues we're dealing with in town. You know, I think overall, crime is trending in the right direction, which is obviously down. But I think we need to look at where we can continue to make improvements in that, and I think funding those, those extra, you know, extra services is one good way to do that.
Yes, I definitely would support that. And in fact, the King County has given us a discount in 2016 because we didn't use all the services that were budgeted. So, you know, the SWAT team didn't have to come to Carnation. So, you know, the SWAT team didn't have to come to Carnation, that saved us money. And so that actually gives room for increased services, like weekend patrols. One thing I am concerned about, though, is that the hours are announced when the King County Sheriff is going to be in town. I think that's silly. The number of hours, fine, but I don't think anyone should know when the scheduled, you know, when the scheduled hours are.
I know we are not in one topic, one subject matter forum here. I want to keep on the same topic here with a general question for all candidates. We're going to start, frankly, at the end with Ernest's time, we'll just work our way back. Public safety and police services have been intensely debated over the last few years. Do you believe police coverage is adequate? And if yes, please state why. If no, describe what you would do to adequately fund police services and sustain that funding long-term? And what would you trade in order to fund it adequately?
Okay, I'm going to try to avoid repeating a lot of what's already been said, but there's going to be some crossover. I think that we've, I think police service has noticeably improved since we've contracted the King County Sheriff's Office. So far, the statistics support that. Reported crimes going down and arrests coming up. I think we can, I'd be thankful that we have a sheriff's deputy in Scott Allen that wants to be here, knows the community, and wants to serve the community. Like I mentioned before, there's some lingering chronic issues, however, and we should look at improving those, or, you know, addressing those and adding funds, funds for those patrols. I think Dustin mentioned already, but we are getting savings this year because we didn't need that SWAT team or the major crimes unit or anything like that. We're actually getting a reimbursement for that. Being, listening to the preliminary budget discussions, I think the city has wisely proposed using that money for some of these additional patrols. And I think that's a good plan for this year. Going forward, I think we need to continuously evaluate whether that's going to be sustainable. And if not, I think we need to identify sources of revenue that we can make this sustainable.
I'd like to, we're going to continue on that question, those set of questions. I'd really like to have the candidates focus on the funding issue because that really seems to be where the questions and the potential disagreement comes from. So the part of this question that I really would like for you to consider addressing more directly, and Ernest, I think you did that, by the way, is that, and just as we come down the line, is about making sure you're funding police services adequately. How do you sustain long-term funding with the budget that you're familiar with today in the city? And then certainly the other part is, if you needed to make a trade-off within the budget, what would you trade off in order to fund police services adequately? Because all of you have said that that's a priority for you. So Dustin?
So yes, increasing the budget even also. Everyone's in favor of more police services. Really, the way we're going to pay for it is with more households. We have a lot of building going on in Carnation, and 2016 budget is projecting that we're going to have increased property tax revenue to the city. The utility tax revenue is increasing to the city because, again, there's more households. And sales tax revenue to the city is increasing. So I don't really see a trade-off. It seems like the budget is expanding, and if public safety is a priority, those funds can go to public safety.
So first of all, it's not adequate, and...
The vitality of the town and retail sales tax is an important source of revenue for the city. Jim, the follow-up question is from Tim Brad. It's related to this topic. He asks, "Even though we have obtained funds and grants to improve Tolta Avenue, why do you oppose this? How do we increase visitors and revenue?"
First of all, I don't oppose it. So, I think that having a plan for the downtown toll corridor, even water, is a good idea. But I just think that we need to be judicious in what we're doing with that and making it viable long-term, that we can actually maintain that going forward for five to 10 years and not coming back to the citizens in another five years and saying, "Hey, we need $40,000 because we need to maintain something that we didn't put in right in the first place."
Great. Thank you for clarifying that too. All right, next question. We're going to change topics onto our new housing developments that's taken place in the city. There's a general question, and then there are some general questions asked by the audience. Carnation is in the process of adding new housing developments for the first time in over a decade. What are your thoughts about managing growth? Given the current Washington State growth requirements for Carnation, what does Carnation need to do to ensure effective and manageable growth? And then I'll follow up with some of the other questions from the audience. We're going to start with Ernest.
Well, I'm excited about the sudden surge in interest in building in Carnation. You know, building the community, I think, is one of the main means of developing the economy and making it stable. I think it brings in, you know, certainly new revenues, also creates, you know, a large customer base for local businesses and could possibly, you know, likely attract new businesses to town. I think we need to make sure that safeguards are in place to make sure that we don't get the type of development we don't want. And to me, that's development that fractures the community. You know, we have two different, or multiple, you know, half-components of the community that's not united. And I think we do make sure that the development benefits the town and doesn't adversely affect it, you know, congesting traffic or, you know, adversely affecting property values, that kind of thing. You know, the city has created an attractive environment for potential home builders. I think that's a good thing. They've also implemented some safeguards already in the comprehensive plan, the zoning map, the design standards that make sure that, you know, we're trying to maintain a rural, close-knit community. I think, I mean, I think we need to make sure that those guidelines are adhered to and stay up to date.
So yeah, the development is exciting. You know, the zoning maps are already in place, and so the private property owners are building as allowed by the present zoning. And there, you know, there's 130 houses planned right now. It is going to be somewhat of a slow burn. It'll probably take about two years, actually, for all those 130 houses to be built. So it does give us some time, but I do see the toll corridor improvements being really important for that. There will be more traffic, obviously, with more households. And I'd like to see the city really work more closely with the county and the state to make sure that those traffic impacts are mitigated. I'm specifically thinking of Toll Hill Road, you know, that intersection. That, you know, that intersection gets pretty congested, and something needs to be done about that before it gets even worse than it already is.
So, I actually called the city manager on this question because I didn't fully understand it, so I wanted to get it to him. This is really a question that should be asked to King County council members, not city council members. The land that we have in Carnation is pretty much filled up about what we can build on right now. The only way that we can grow is to annex more property. We have to annex that through King County. And King County has to let us annex that property unless a private system comes and wants to be annexed into the city. Also, though, with the current developments going on, I would hold those developers to the same standards throughout. We have the estates that got built with nice sidewalks that go through and everything. Then on Entwistle, we have two more developments going in. There's a dangerous corner on Entwistle that a lot of kids come down. We could have sidewalks on that development, on the dangerous corner, for free with the developer putting it in. Instead, the city planner would let them put in asphalt and just roll it by. So as a city council member, I'd actually look at those plans and go, "How come we're not adhering to the plan structure that we set forth going forward?" And have the developers cover those.
Lee said...
Go ahead.
Lee stated, and this is question five. "East King County is one of the fastest-growing regions in the country. We need to understand what this means and plan for it. We just finished our comprehensive plan. It projects our built-out population to be about 4,520 years. Currently, our population is around 1,900. While we are required to absorb some of the population that is arriving in the area, we will not get nearly as big as the ball or still economy because of our river boundaries and location in the floodplain. Knowing where we have come from will inform our efforts to maintain our small hometown feel even as the new growth supports our downtown core and businesses." Steve?
I think the new homes being added to Carnation is one of the best things that's happened in a long time to this town. I think the things that we need to look at is egress into these places and the move of traffic in and out. You're adding, what, 75 homes down 50th Avenue, and you've got one way out. You've got no controlled lights, no controlled stops. And, you know, and I understand development means change, and change usually relates to pain for somebody. And if you've read the page, the Facebook page of Carnation, you'll see that a lot of people on 50th Avenue have real heartburn over the development. I'm not sure. I got one letter in the mail about the development. I know the developers, so it's a little easier for me to understand. But I, Carnation is not looking, the council is not looking at egress. You've got one way in, and that's it. And I think we need to start looking at alternate ways of getting in and out of these developments besides, you know, Entwistle or 50th or Morrison.
Well, the growth is happening according to our comprehensive plan and the zoning, but also we do have to look at the land use map that we, there's two different charts. We use land use and zoning. So far, we're in sync with the state and what they want us to do under our Growth Management Act. The state, a number of years ago, dictated how much, how many people they wanted to live in Carnation. So the zoning was adjusted to accommodate. In a new development, you must keep, they need so many people per acre, so many houses per acre. This is what they're looking for, and this is what we have to comply with. So far as egress, we've approached the state on Morrison. They tell us that if there's enough traffic, they'll put a light logo in there. But until that happens, they have rigorous requirements on the state highway where you are not allowed to put a traffic signal. They dictate what happens. Our other growth is going to be if we change the land use for the birth to earth. Hopefully, that will come up with the multiple family, or multiple family or townhouse condominium growing. We're looking at our street plan and the comp plan, which will address our egress. When these developments come up, the developer will be intended to it. And I think we're going in the right direction for that. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, this is the part of the forum, actually, that the, all the candidates are looking forward to, I'm sure. But this is the part of the agenda where each candidate gets to ask their opponent a question. And then, as the questioner, they get one minute to respond to that answer. Not every candidate decided to participate. That's internally, that was internally their choice. And in Jim's case, both me and Jim did decide to participate, but they also both agreed that since Lee's not here this evening, they're not going to participate, even though we had the opportunity to submit an answer. They both agreed it probably wasn't the right thing to do. So that's, we're going to honor that. Certainly. We're going to start with Fred. You have a question for your opponent, Steve.
Yes, I do. For Steve. In the voter information pamphlet for primary, you stated that fire protection and city police matters need to be addressed. What, in your opinion, needs to be addressed in each of these? What would they cost, and how would they be paid for?
Don't get mad. The, we've already addressed the police issue, I believe, a few times. I'll address it again. As the population grows in Carnation, we'll have more revenue for the police. As far as the fire department, my concern there is with the lack of police. The fire department is going to be tasked with more calls. They're going to be asked to deal with combat, with people that are, that cause the injury instead of the people that are injured. And that's, that's my concern, is that if we don't do something with the police, then we're going to have, the fire department is going to be taxed beyond what they are budgeted to deal with. And I, that's my major concern.
Great. You have one minute.
Well, the police will be addressed, at least in the proposed budget they're looking at for 2016, by adding another $50,000 for as-needed services. We have a contract. The county reduced our contract, and we did not put the extra money in the contract. This is a set-asaside line item to be only used as needed. If we don't need it, we won't use it. For fire department, we have to look at what happened when Carnation had their fire department. We had one full-time employee, period. Talking to fire department, there's no way we can improve it. We do not have enough assist valuations to support fire department. And right now, we have full-time, 24/7 coverage, and they are doing what they're tasked. They will not cover stuff that the police do. Fire department has their own thing under Fire District Kennedy, side fire, rescue. So I think we're very adequate for what we have.
Ernest? You had a question for Dustin?
Sure. All right, it's, um, I'll still move ahead.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Steve, you have decided not to ask the question. Is that correct? Or did you want to change your mind?
No, I, no, I would like to rebut what he said.
Oh, you didn't. Ernest, sorry. Since he didn't ask the question, I'm going to ask you. Go ahead. You can do that.
If you now have the budget to allow...
Can you just put that closer?
If you now have the budget to allow more police force, then why did you ask voters for more money six months ago?
Okay. Ernest?
Okay, um, my question was just, if you're elected, based on your experience, which of the council study committee or committees would you like to be involved in, and why? And happy to read those for you in the audience. Community Development, Finance and Operations, Public Health and Safety, and Utilities and Public Facilities?
All right, thank you. Yeah, well, the committees, I would see myself on Utilities Committee, also Public Safety. That is something that I'd be interested in serving on. One of the major, you know, I was thinking about, why did this fail? You know, I think we know, we recognize that there was a need for police services, but why did voters not feel comfortable with that? And I think, I think there could have been improvements into, you know, performance measurement, what the money's going to, that kind of thing. So if we're going to be asking for additional revenues, and, you know, I'm not making any specific proposals for that, but if we are going to do it, I think it needs to, we need to be specific about what we're asking for, what we're going to do with the money. And beyond that, even if we get the money, have performance managers in place so we can report back and say, "This is effective. We're going to keep going with it," or "It's not." And we're not going to, we're not going to keep taking money and using it for something that's not effective.
Dustin? Ernest, I apologize. I mean, they're not giving you one minute to respond to your own question. So we're going to get back to that question about your committees. But Dustin, go ahead and answer that first, please.
Okay. Just thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Ernest, please.
Yeah, um, yeah, I don't even really have a rebuttal. I was just going to answer my own question, so. Um, I figured, yeah, we get on both sides. And it was just kind of to kind of hopefully open up in the background and experience and stuff. Um, you know, as far as the study committees, I saw myself as wanting to be involved in the Finance and Operations Committee and the Utilities and Public Facilities Committee, mostly based on my experience. You know, I think that those are the committees where I'd have the most offer, having worked for a municipal government, you know, specifically in infrastructure maintenance as the street maintenance lead for the city revenue. And, you know, I understand the, you know, as far as the Finance and Operations, budget experience, working with personnel matters, that kind of thing, general administration of the city. So that's just where I felt like my experience would go first.
Great. Thank you all. All right, so we're going to move on to the budget. And there are a number of questions that are part of the general questions you got to advance plus some of the people in the audience ask questions. We're going to get to as many or all of them that we can. What do you see the budget priorities for the city should be? How do you plan on accomplishing those priorities? And how can you be more transparent, as was brought up here this evening? And we'll start with Jim.
Yeah, I'll just go back to, I've been heavily involved in the budgeting process as a citizen, listening to city council. I was asked by city council to come in and help with the budgeting process on a committee a few years ago. And like I stated before, I don't see that budgeting process happening. There should be a plan for everything that's happening in the incarnation and how it delivers and what happens to the master plan, and how that's maintained if it takes maintenance over time. And that should be something that as a citizen, you should be able to walk into city council and go, what are they doing on this bill? Well, here's a one-page sheet of why, what's happening and how we're going to fund it and long-term what's happening. So for anything that comes before council, we should have, I think, a budgeting, something like that. And I think that's the main thing. There, there hasn't been a plan in the budgeting process long-term.
Steve?
I would agree with Jim on that. The, the planning of the budget is probably more important than anything else. Planning is, is everything. And forecasting is, is really hard to do. And, and that happens, we do it at our own homes every day. And the way, the priorities of the budget should be, life safety would be top priority, I would believe, and then attracting sustainable income for the city.
Fred?
On the budget priority in our city charter, public safety is the number one priority. That is so stated in our charter. And as you can see, we do use about 50% of our general fund for that. There are other things that have to be done in general. You just have to run the city. You've got to run the planning department, public works and so forth. And also, a lot of our revenue is restricted revenue. People have to understand that even though we may be getting more funds, sales tax or REIT taxes, they can only be spent for certain items per state law. Real estate excise tax can only be used on capital planning. Our traffic impact fees can only be used to improve capacity, not just to maintain streets. So this is what we have to do when we look at budgeting. We've got to know what are we going to have, what can we spend it for? And we're trying to keep the city going. We have to do everything that you folks want us to do. When you come to city hall and when you talk to somebody, you can get what you want. Our long-term planning is in the capital planning, which people would come to our budget workshops. It's open, it's visible, we talk up all the time. And we look out there and maybe there's one or two citizens. So please come and talk to us. We're going to have two budget open houses coming up in the next council meetings. Come talk to us.
Dustin?
So budget priorities, everyone's been talking about public safety, of course. But also, infrastructure is important. And another aspect that really hasn't been touched on is our, basically our reserve. We do have a contingency reserve in the budget and it's pretty small, less than 5%. I'd like to see that increased. You know, we're, we're kind of entering a boom time and the budget's increasing and revenues are increasing. But that's not going to last forever. And we really need to be planning ahead for the unexpected. Another aspect is just how the money is, there's kind of different revenue streams. So you have like the taxes that are coming in for sales tax, utilities and then property taxes. But there's also impact fees. So every new house that's sold in Carnation, there's going to be impact fees coming into the city. I think one of the neat things about those are they are earmarked. So like the park, there's a park impact fee. So some of the parks in town will get some needed revitalization.
Okay, I kind of came at this question of budget priorities a little bit from kind of a broad perspective. Like, you know, I kind of talked about this a little bit, but making sure that the process is transparent and accessible. I think that, that work, that starts by working with city staff before the, you know, as they're developing the budget before it actually gets proposed to council to make sure that they're addressing, you know, the top priorities of the community. Make sure that, that people are, are, feel like they're getting a good value for their, their investment when they're paying their taxes. You know, a little bit more specific, I think we need to try to stabilize the budget. You know, we're talking about reliable and renewable funding for police. You know, a suitable contingency fund for, you know, unforeseen circumstances, providing that level of stability. And then also considering the future when, when we're budgeting. You know, when we, in a city like Carnation, you know, grant funding is, is, is a major, a major component to community projects and, you know, we rarely have, we consider expensive projects, road maintenance projects, you know, overlays, that kind of thing. You know, we need to set those, set funds aside when we have them to make sure that we have like, that we have matching funds available for these grants so that we can make the most of the money that we have.
All right, we're going to stay with you for a moment, Ernest. We're going to have follow-up type financial budget questions. When one-time revenues are generated for the city, what is the appropriate way to handle them? And so, just so everyone's clear, one-time revenues are not things from, you know, your, your income, your, I'm sorry, your taxes, your property taxes. Those things come on a regular basis. There are fees, permits and other type of revenue that the city will see on a one-time basis at times. So the question has to do is when you do receive these revenues, what's the appropriate, appropriate way to handle them? Because you may or may not be budgeting for that.
Okay, um, one-time revenues. I think one-time revenues should be used on one-time investments, not ongoing expenses like needed staffing or, you know, ongoing maintenance, that kind of thing. I think you're essentially kicking the can on the road. You need renewable revenues for those types of things. I think that with one-time funding, we can, we can bank some of that. I don't think necessarily we're going to have enough money to, I, I think if we bank it and like I mentioned before, use that as potential matching funds for, for grants, that would be a way to make the most of that money. You know, I think we can use it for one-time expenses, you know, repairs to park equipment. You know, that's something that I know was a little bit before. And, you know, again, grants for infrastructure maintenance, road maintenance. I know how expensive these overlays and road projects can be. And I think if we try to make the most of the funds we have available, that's going to be important.
Yeah, with the air on, folks, you'll get, make it closer. Fred? Freddie?
Our, our one-time revenues we're looking at right now is part of our general fund. We do have what we call a double O two fund, which, when we do have a surplus, of course, we haven't had a surplus much. But we're looking at it and our budgeting is to add, when we got our year-end balance, we need at least two months left over if you look at our budget. We need two months to cover the January and February bills because we only get major revenue at the end of April and the end of October. That's when our sources come. So we have to pay our bills. But our one-time, we're looking at adding more money into this double O two fund, which would be used for grant matching. This is what we're looking at. If we want to do major improvements in town, when they come up, okay, we'll give you $500,000, but you've got to come up with $50,000. This is where we want to have this fund. And this is what I would encourage and that's, I'm talking it in our budget saying, that's what we will do. We will put our surplus money in this. And I like to look antithetically. This is how Bath-Bothel did their downtown. They did not do that over one year. That has been, I think, a 15-year project for them to get enough money to finally get themselves within the shape. And I hope we can do that here with Carnation.
Steve?
I believe the one-time funds should be earmarked for matching funds as well. They, I've got a question for you. The one-time fund, is that your impact fee on development?
They're restricted, those are restricted funds.
Those are restricted funds for the neighborhoods that are affected, correct?
For the city.
Yeah, Steve, I'm trying to answer your question. Yes, that's one of them, but there's, there are many others. The, the, this one, yes.
I am, yeah. Okay, but I would, I would stay with the same, the same process that you got an impact fees for the development that's coming in, it's one-time cash down. And it's no different than your personal house. You're going to want to save that money to match it with something else later on.
I think one-time funding needs to be addressed as revenue stabilization funds and in general fund. Everybody's pretty much stated this, but the way that you grow a city and improve it is matching funds from the city to do projects. But I also do think that there has been a surplus this year and there could be things that have been addressed this year that councils decided not to address. Certain street functions and police functions that right now we're looking at over $400,000 in the general fund. And some of that money should be spent, but a majority of it should be put back for matching funds.
So one example, I was thinking of for how you would use these funds is really-
Well, I have experience spending grant funds, so. There's a little bit there. Um, no, I mean, I, you know, I've seen the, the grant writing process. And I think, you know, a key component of that is knowing what kind of proposals to submit that, you know, to check the boxes to get that grant funding. You know, I think, you know, they're often geared towards safety improvements, environmental concerns, that kind of thing. So identifying the type of projects that we can use, that we need as a community and that can be appropriately funded by, by grants. I think, and knowing how that process works is important.
Okay. This is from Kevin Kraszewski. A question related to priorities as it pertains to the budget. In your opinion, what is your number one priority to change in Carnation? And if there is associated, associated costs with those, how would you pay for it? And again, this is an open question to anyone for the panel. And if no one volunteers, I'll volunteer. So again, in your opinion, what's your number one priority to change in Carnation? And if there is a cost, how would you pay for it?
I think, I've spoke to my plan about police services, setting up a separate fund to actually fund police services on an ongoing basis. Right now, we have some money that we can put towards police services, but you really need to take baseline budgeting. If we fill 80% of these households, what does our budget look like? You really have to work with for 10 to 15 years. And these one-time monies need to be set aside for doing that. But in those times those houses are filled, if we have an extra $1,000, $3,000, $10,000 that we can put in this one for police, that's something that I think should have been done last year and it didn't happen.
Anyone else?
I can comment on the police budget if I can. But when we saw, we, we signed an annual budget with the police for the county. And what you did last, last year, this year, they said we didn't use a lot of the services. The county is very nice. If you don't use the services, they give you money back or they give you discount next year. And this is why our contract going into 2016 is $37,000 less than it was this current year. So what, this past year, we didn't have the money, but we will have coming in 2016 and this is what we're going to use that extra money for.
Lee Grebman said, first, we need to restore the cuts we made during the recession. We need to properly maintain our streets and parks. Those are my priorities and there's sufficient funding to do this now. Here's another set of questions for, from the audience. This is from Jackie Perigee. Would you be willing to, together with the city of Duval and the community of Fall City, demand that the Wash, that Washdaw whitening the shoulders? We have a dramatic increase in traffic. This highway is primitively inadequate, particularly with large commercial trucks. And there's other questions related to traffic. So that is a basis for addressing the traffic issue in Carnation. But first, please address, starting with Steve. Start, please address initially Jackie's question about, about safety improvements on 203.
I think safety improvement on 203 is probably one of the biggest things on all of our minds as we travel in and out of 203. I believe that Carnation should ban with Fall City and Duval about more items than just 203. Getting the state to improve 203, we see what they did last time they improved it. They put bumper rails on it so we can slide into the bumper rails instead of into the ditch. So, yes, I believe that we should ban for Fall City and, and Duval to ask, not demand, but ask the state. Was there more to that question?
Good.
There's a way we can do that. If it becomes a priority, I think we can do that through Suburban Cities Association, which we have, or it's Call Me Valley Government Association. We're very effective on dealing with people. We can bring that up as the, as an item, a discussion item for a meeting with both the SPGA, Suburban Cities, as to look at that. But again, you don't demand the state to do things. We can ask them, they'll look at it. And I think a question I would ask the state, why does Snohomish County have white shoulders on 203 and King County doesn't? Which would be an interesting one to see if we get an answer for that. But I'm off, we're going, going forward, talking to them.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think everyone agrees that that's something that we want to do. An important part of that is not only networking with our neighboring cities, but also reaching out to the county and state. One aspect of this that I've already been doing is attending local town halls and other meetings as much as possible. So, you know, our state legislature legislators have a town hall. I think it's really important to show up. And I've been attending those town halls and then making, I don't just look out the back afterwards either. You know, I make a point of introducing myself and where I'm from. So they know who Dustin Green from Carnation is and they know that I care about what's going on.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense. We all live in this valley. I have young children and we travel 203 all the time from games in Duval to Fall City, all over the place. So having more presence and a more cohesive presence to go to the state with and say, hey, we need some help, I think makes tons of sense, not just on this issue, but on a lot of issues.
I'll just kind of echo this. I think maintaining these close relationships, you know, with, with neighboring agencies, Washdaw, King County, as well as, you know, Fall City and, and Duval. I think that's important for, for many things, not just, not just 203. You know, I've, I've dealt with King County roads and Washdaw directly before and, and maintaining those relationships so that we're not just, so that they know who we are, they know what our concerns are and we're not just coming to them and demanding that, that we, that they change something without kind of having that relationship in place first, that working relationship that invoicing our concerns kind of need along the way.
Thank you. I want to make sure we have enough time for your closing statements. So this is going to be one of the last ones, so I want to make sure we get it in. Since you all understand this is a four-year term that expires at the end of 2019, what's your vision of Carnation, Carnation as you enter 2020? And this is really a question that's related around how do you know you've succeeded in your four-year term? And we'll start with Jim.
I think my main thing that I've stated on my platform, I want to see better police and fire services, not just from what we have now, but what we're going to need for the new housing developments coming in. It's going to be a bigger and bigger issue. Infrastructure is going to be a bigger issue also. If we don't do something about egress onto 203, people move to this community because they like to live in a small town, but they, a lot of times, they're working in Bellevue or Lethman. They want to get back to this community, spend time in it. So we need to deal with that also and not have long traffic flows. I used to live in Gig Harbor. I had my office in Bellevue. I moved to Carnation to, to shorten my commute time in order to spend time with my family in Carnation. So I think that's big. So those are the main things I'd like to see by my four-year term.
Fred?
All right, um, in 2020, I, I see Carnation as a safe, stable and unified community. I think our, our development guidelines will, will avoid creating a fractured, split community. I think downtown will generate a sense of, of place, you know. We're talking about the toll corridor plan. I think it's a place where businesses can succeed and visitors are attracted to the community, you know, by the natural beauty of the region, recreational opportunities. You know, my vision is, for Carnation is as a, as a small town that serves as the model for others. I think, I think we can do it the right way and, and be that one.
Steve?
My vision for Carnation in 2020 would be a, a community that is a safe and desirable place to live, a desirable place to have a business. It would be a place that people want to raise their kids in. We want people to fight to get into the house here. And that's what I would strive for and to be a little more transparent with the city council and what they're doing and when they do it.
Dustin?
I think looking, looking- Ahead to 2020, just really a vibrant downtown. I think walkability is pretty unique here and that's a, a major positive. You know, you don't have to hop in your car to go downtown. You can walk from most, from most houses in town. You can walk from most houses in town. And so just imagining that future, families walking to parks, you know, going downtown to shop, to go to restaurants, I think that's a pretty nice vision.
I think in four years, I'd like to see a vibrant downtown, which the toll corridor thing will bring up. And if it's vibrant, and I know I've been successful, I'm encouraging it. Also, I would like to see development in some affordable housing, which our change in our land use map would do it. This provides maybe housing for seniors, because many of our seniors are getting it, so they want to downsize, but there's no place for them to, they might live in Carnation, no place to go. I am pushing for that, and we're talking about trying to get the appropriate development, which is, for you're familiar, is the birth-to-earth area, which is now high-density residential land use. And so we can get something like condominium, townhouse, or even multifamily, so that the seniors can live in town, they've lived here their whole life, their family has. If we can do that, I think I will have been very successful in four years.
All right. At this time, we're going to move to our closing statements. I'm going to start at the far end in position five with Ernest, and gentlemen, we're just going to go right down the road. And you have two minutes for your closing statement.
All right. Well, I won't need two minutes. I'll keep it nice and brief. I just wanted to, again, thank Stuart and Chamber of Commerce Senior Center for hosting this. I think it's been a great event. Just would like to restate why, there we go, restate why I'm running. I'm running because I feel I have something to offer to the city, and I'd love to put my education, experience, and commitment to the town to use as a member of the city council.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I think it's really encouraging on a gang night to see a lot of people out participating in our city. And I would encourage everyone that's here to continue that involvement, you know, go to city council meetings. I think more involvement is a good thing. There is one question that didn't get answered or wasn't asked, but it's the number-one question I've received ever since I filed to be a candidate, and that's, when are my yard signs going out? And I would like everyone to quietly answer to yourself, do you like the yard signs around town? Do you wish there were more yard signs around town? I don't. So I will not be putting out yard signs. If you want to know how to spell Dustin Green, I'm in the voter's guide, and my contact information is in there, so if you have questions for me that haven't been answered here, if you want to dialogue about issues, please contact me. I have some signs up there.
I just think that, you know, the reason I'm running for council is because I've been involved in council issues on the sidelines, giving input. And I think I'm a person that knows how to put a plan together and work a plan, and work a long-term plan, not just a short-term plan with stop gas. I really don't understand what's going on with not being able to have police services right now additionally in 2015, because the general fund balance is there to do it. And not be stupid about it and throw hundreds of thousands of dollars about it, but you just usually look at things. And I think that as a council member, when citizens come to me or businesses come to me, I'm going to look at those situations and go, how's it best for that citizen? How's it best for the business? And how does it overall impact the city of Carnation moving forward? So that's one, right? Thank you, and thank you everybody for showing up time.
Yeah, I'll start by thanking Stuart for doing this, putting this on. I'm running for city council because if, I tried the attending council meetings, I tried the planning board, saying to me that the buck stops with the city council, and so if you're going to complain, get involved. And so that's what I did.
Well, I think my experience in business, as a co-owner of a large bowling alley back in the Midwest, Minneapolis, particularly in the aviation industry and management, and the U.S. Navy as a commanding officer of a helicopter squadron. I think I got the background for an elected position in Carnation. Also, as commander of a large job club at a budget of about a quarter of a million dollars, required really strict fiscal responsibility. These positions, all of them, required making budgets and living within the allotted revenues and getting a job done properly. Also, I have seven and three-quarters years on the planning board prior to council. Well, it's two terms now, and I think I have an insight on how the city revenue is generated and how it may be spent, which is so important to understand how that thing works. And again, thanks, Stuart. Thank you for all. And a follow-up, if you want to see the budget for 2016, our next two council meetings, we're having a public hearing on the budget, so please come. You will be heard, you'll be allowed to talk, give your opinion, let us know, because that's where the decisions will be made. So please come. Thank you.
Lee Grumman's closing statement. She provided, she says, "I moved from Seattle to Carnation 20 years ago. I remember going to the grocery store in '95 and noticed that the checkout person chatting with a customer as if they were neighbors. I saw it at the post office and hope that someday everyone will be so familiar. Twenty years this month, I've passed since then, has passed since then, and I'm grateful to have gotten to know many of you through my years on the planning board, the council, the mayor, and as a business owner, I'm Mivers, and of course, as my friend. If you decide to elect me to council, this would be in my heart and at the core of my work for our city." All right. Well, we've come to the end of our forum tonight. I hope that you found this to be as informative as we intended it to be. Thank you certainly to the chamber, and certainly you, the audience, for your patience and for frankly being as cordial as you were during this evening. I want to also thank you for submitting these great questions. There's only a couple here that I wasn't able to get to, but many of them were addressed in other questions. But again, thank you for submitting those questions. I also want to thank Mike and Jeremy for helping us out this evening. And thank you, candidates, for your participation tonight, for agreeing to the rules as we did in the sessions that we had together, and frankly, for, most importantly, for putting yourself out there for criticism. As a candidate, you can have people who agree, and those are great, but you also can have people who disagree with you, and for putting yourself out there, that shows how much passion you have for the city. So certainly, I want to thank you on behalf of everyone here for running in this election term.